I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. If you'll all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I believe we have a board member on line, so do the roll call.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we have to do the roll call, so attendance and all votes will be done through roll call. When your name is called, please cast your vote with the three available options of yes, approve, no, disapprove, or abstain. Board members that are online and board members in person, please respond here so that we can make sure we can hear each other. So very quickly, roll call. David G.
Here.
Jade Parker.
Here.
There she is. Annie Seacrest. Oh, excuse me, Annie Siegfried, sorry.
It's okay, here.
There we go. Um, Dane Wing.
Here.
Tyler Dunn.
Here.
Christine Chen. Oh, there she is. Kathy Jacobs.
Here.
Patty Gordon, I had emailed, she would be absent today. Rebecca Lambert.
Here.
Betty Morrell.
Here.
Sean Rodrick.
Here.
Kelty Bogey.
Here.
David Twitchell.
Here.
Esme Janison.
Here.
And Eric Nelson is not here. So, good to go.
So, good evening, and thank you all for coming tonight. Before we get started, I'd just like to remind everyone about our core values for RSU 38, which are integrity, perseverance, family, respect, collaboration, and trust. These values support our mission of being a caring school community dedicated to excellence, and they also support our vision of being safe, dynamic learning communities where people of all ages will think, aspire, and participate as responsible citizens in an ever-changing global society. As you've just heard, this meeting is being held in person and on Zoom. So we're going to have three different sections for citizen comments tonight. So the first section will be when we have our guest speakers. So if you want to participate, the following guidelines will be followed. So those attending by Zoom, you'll notice that your microphones will be muted except during the identified portions of public comment at this meeting. And then if you're viewing on June, uh, June, oh, boy. If you're viewing on Zoom and would like to speak during the public comments, please use the chat feature and notify Ms. McGregor, and she'll let me know, and then I can call on you. And if you're here in person and want to speak, there are some clipboards at the back table that I'd ask that you sign up for, depending upon which topic you want to talk about. All speakers, please identify yourself with first and last name and the town you live in. Priority will be given to individuals who live or pay taxes in our member communities, immediate families of enrolled students, and employees of RSU 38. Individuals that do not have one of these direct connections to our district may or may not be given permission to speak at the discretion of the board. We ask that speakers limit their comments to three minutes, and if someone who has a similar view of yours speaks ahead of you, please reference their comment rather than repeat the same ideas. We want to hear from all of our stakeholders, and we ask that you be respectful with your constructive comments. I would also like to clarify how we address concerns of the public. In accordance with RSU 38 policy B E D H, we welcome all respectful comments and concerns, and we ask that you not use any derogatory comments or use names of or identifying comments of any district personnel. We cannot discuss specific personnel matters in a public setting, but can listen to broad concerns folks may have. All speakers are to address the chair and direct questions or comments to a particular board members only with approval of the chair. The board will hear and record comments and questions, but will not debate the matters at this meeting. Board members' questions must be addressed through the chair. Following the meeting, we'll take time to research and gather information on whatever issues might come up, and at the next board meeting, we'll follow up with information for you. The public is always encouraged to call the superintendent at any time with issues and concerns. So tonight, we have a presentation from the Kennebec County Sheriff's Office. The process for this, for our guests, will be for them to first start with their presentation. Then I will take citizen comments, if there are any, and questions from the, from citizens, and then the board will have a chance to ask questions and discuss this. We will not be making a decision one way or the other tonight, and we'll take all the information that we've heard into consideration as we move forward in the decision-making process. So Jade, we'd like to introduce our guests.
So, as you guys remember, when we started a discussion about the potential for having a student resource officer in our district, one of the directives that you had given me was to reach out to Sheriff Mason from the Kennebec Sheriff's Department as our kind of first place to start. And then after I shared that, had that meeting, I shared some information with you, then you asked if I could invite Sheriff Mason and Deputy Day, who is a acting school resource officer at this time. So I, at this time, like to invite them up to the podium. And I asked Deputy Day if he wouldn't mind sharing a little bit about, like, kind of what his day looks like as an SRO in the district, and he can explain a little bit more about the district he's currently in and stuff like that. So turn it over to them. Thank you guys so much for being here tonight.
Yeah, you know, Jeremy is here. Jeremy is the resource officer of Lawrence in Somerset County. It's a little odd, but it's been going on quite a while. I think he's invaluable, a resource officer within RSU is invaluable. We all see that face, some experience around our nation. It's very sad. And a lot of those problems can be taken care of.
Now we have two.
All right, can be taken care of, that's better, I can hear that. By the resource officer. It really takes a special person to do this. You cannot put a fresh person out of the academy into the school resource officer position. You can't, because those people, much like myself, way back at the start, thirty-six years ago, I was, I was going to save the world. One arrest at a time. Okay, that's not, that's not our goals here. It's to gain the children's trust, the staff's trust, how to handle problems. It's not our responsibilities to handle administrative duties in the school. That's the people that run the school. So I, I'd really rather kind of like to leave it open to questions. What do you want to know? And I'll let Jeremy do the majority of the talking, because this is what he does, and what he does incredibly well.
Great, thank you.
So do you have any specific questions or anything along those lines that I can attempt to answer for you? Go ahead.
Oh, no question. Go ahead.
I have a question. Thanks so much for coming. We've been looking forward to meeting you and talking with you, and we really appreciate you coming to talk to us. Um, my question is related to training in working with students with mental health diagnoses or disabilities. Is there any particular training that you have taken that's required for school resource officers in dealing with students?
Yeah, there, there is training available for that. It's also important for the SRO to understand who those students are. And we have, we have, at the district I work in, we have staff that's, that's their area of expertise to deal with those particular students. And there's sensory issues, there's, there's a multitude of challenges. And the SRO is basically there to assist almost from a distance, just to monitor in case the situation goes beyond the control of the experts, I would say. But if the SRO can educate themselves to identify who those students are and working with those staff members who are specifically trained in that element, it's, it's more successful than it isn't. And in addition to that, there is training that you can get as an SRO to learn how to identify and how to deal and how to communicate with those particular students. So yeah, we do have that.
Thanks. Um, and is that something, I'm, I don't know if this is a question maybe for Jay or somebody else, but is there a choice that the, like, would we be able to ensure that a person had that training? Or, I mean, I love what you said about sort of standing back and watching from a distance and educating yourself, and that training is available. Is that something that we would be able to have any control over in terms of the person that we hired?
Right, the schools can work with cooperation with the sheriff's office, and there is additional training that the SRO needs. That can, that can be arranged through either through the school or the sheriff's office working together to make sure that that's something that that particular person has gone through. So yes, it is.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And if I, can I chime in on that a little bit? I think what's important to remember is that every law enforcement professional out there, much of our business throughout the day is dealing with people with mental health. And as, and as we gain tenure in this position, you get better at what you do. Because our, our, our whole goal is to mitigate the situation and keep things calm. Okay, not wind things up. That is really important. All right, so Jeremy, how many years you got showing us now?
I started in 2014, where that's where this is. And the uniform that I wear is, is different from this uniform, because it's more of a approachable type, like a, like a softer type uniform, like similar to something I've got on here. Because different students come from different backgrounds with different levels of trauma in their lives. And sometimes, see, the uniform can, can trigger a response. So it's important for the SRO to require, it's important for the SRO to remember that and have an extra level of patience and understanding so that they don't aggravate a situation just by standing there. So it's important to know that, recognize it, and remove themselves from it if necessary, but still observing, but more of a hands-up approach. That's very important, because I've seen the reactions, like you'll, when I first started, I was, I would wear the uniform like this one, and there is some apprehension at first. And then when you transition to a softer type uniform, it's just, it's just more approachable. So that's been very successful for us, over the past year.
Yeah, I just thought that was important to bring up. Because, you know, you deal with mental health and substance abuse. They co-occur together every single day, and we're all getting very good at it. Okay, because we have resources to go to that can help us with, you know, questions. NAMI, you know, for National Association of Mental, Mental Health, okay? I don't think I got that right.
National Alliance.
Glad that's it, yeah. Okay, uh, just, it, it's, it's really important, because it's so, it's so widespread, if you will.
Thank you. Are there any questions from any citizens or anybody from the audience have any questions? Go ahead, Robin. You can't, you're gonna have to go up through the microphone so that the people that are on, sorry, the people that are on Zoom can hear you.
I'm Robin Graziano, a teacher at the high school and also a resident. I was wondering if all the training that you might receive is a standard training throughout the state, or is it just, does it differ from area to area depending on what maybe your department might offer?
So there is local training and national training. So both of those options are out there, especially for someone new to the, to the assignment. They should, they should probably go through a, a training along those lines. The, the training that you can get is, it's both from a standpoint of working with special needs students or just interacting with the community, dealing with any kind of situation that might come up that doesn't necessarily involve legal action. In addition to the training that we get for interaction with students, there's also tactical considerations, because the primary responsibility for having a school resource officer is being the first line of defense against a, a threat to the school. And while that's always a possibility, the probability is fairly low. So the interactions that I have on a regular basis are more of helping students that are in crisis, giving them an opportunity to be able to vent their frustrations without getting themselves in trouble, having a safe place to go to when they're having a bad day. Because some of these students, they go through some problems outside of school, and they come to school, and it's, it's difficult for them. And instead of exploding, they, they have an option, they can go and kind of de-escalate, and it gives them a, some dignity, because it's away from the public fray, so not everybody's going to be seeing what's going on. So it's important that that school resource officer can interact and has that kind of patience and understanding to be able to address those kinds of questions that might come up or those kinds of problems that come up. So it is a, it's a, it's a learning process for sure. So if you do decide to go with this program, you definitely need to do your research on that element. And when you select the person to represent the agency or represent, because they're representing your school district as well, it's not just the law enforcement side of it. That person needs to be someone who's carefully vetted, that you do your background on, and they have a certain personality and a certain maturity level to be able to do this job effectively. Because there's a lot of boundaries that need to be established, especially at the high school level with, with students. So that needs to be first and foremost on someone's mind. Okay.
You folks are very lucky, because you have a resource sitting right over there, Dane. Because he's one of us, and he knows he's been there and done that. And I, I would reach out to him whenever you can, because he's gonna give you the straight scoop. And he's a Marine.
Did you have a question, Dane?
Not.
No, I thought I said, Sean.
Uh, could you give us some examples, some situations? I mean, I know it probably changes every day, but some different situations you've dealt with, how you interact with students?
Yeah, it's, it's a multitude of issues. There's anywhere from students who are engaging in self-harm or suicidal-type tendencies, students who have shut down completely and just, it just takes a lot of being able to remove the student from the equation. Sometimes it's better to, if it was, for example, a situation that occurred in a classroom, it's better to remove the other students from the classroom to get this student now isolated with you. So again, there's, there's more of an opportunity for you to break through to that student, because there's not all these other people standing around with their phones, help, and that kind of thing. And it offers, like I said, importantly, kids want to be respected, and they want to maintain their dignity. And you can make that happen for them, and then, then let them come the rest of the way to you. If there's, I know that one of the questions that comes up is, is are school resource officers looking to arrest everybody? And, uh, no, that should be a last resort. So arresting a student should be the absolute last resort for a school resource officer. Sometimes it's, it's unavoidable, you might have a victim that's wanting to prosecute, and that's out of the hands of the SRO. Sometimes there's exigent circumstances that, that mandate an arrest. But a lot of times, it's up to the discretion of the SRO. And we'd rather educate than, I know it sounds stupid to say, but it's rather to educate than incarcerate. And that's the goal. Hopefully, we can teach some kids some lessons, and they can learn that. And when they get older, they're not making the same kind of mistakes they were as juveniles. But that, again, establishes, that's on the SRO to build that relationship and establish that trust with those students. The, the SRO has to earn that. It can't just be expected to be given to them. The SRO, whoever that may be, needs to be able to earn that trust with those students and the staff and the parents of the community. Because if they don't have that, then it's going to be, it's going to be tough sledding for that particular person. So, there's that.
Tyler? So I, I have a question, this more, goes back along the lines of arrest. Does your district have a policy around possession of substances that would be illegal for a minor to possess, so marijuana, alcohol, tobacco?
We have, for us, we have certain discretion when it comes to possession. There's a difference between a student that is abusing a substance versus a student that is furnishing or trafficking illegal substances at school. And again, that's an educational opportunity for us. Do, we, I weigh the totality of the circumstances. Is this a student that's suffering with a problem, like an addiction? Or is this a student that's using the school as a way to traffic or furnish drugs to other students? We always try to look at the big picture when it comes to kids, because, let's face it, these are, these are still developing brains, and they're not always going to fire on all cylinders. So we need to be very patient with them. But also, we need to understand that if this is something that can be educated and helped to get this student free from this addiction, or if this is something that requires further investigation as to, is there trafficking, is it furnishing? So yeah, we, we do look at those on an individual basis. Typically, we don't arrest for possession of an illegal substance. We offer sort, sort of alternate program. We also look for restorative practices when students break the law, depending on how, the severity of it. So we do have those. Any, is that, answer your question?
Yeah, it's more just, my concern with an SRO is along those lines, you know? Especially where we're at the high school, high schoolers tend to make dumb decisions. And I just don't want to see a high school that makes a dumb decision, whether it be possession of marijuana, alcohol, tobacco, makes a dumb decision and gets referred to the criminal justice system for a dumb decision along that line. That's kind of my concern.
Yeah, I have, I have not referred a student because of, of possession of, of an illegal substance, or even if they come to the school under the influence of something. Typically, we refer them to their parents. And again, there's alternate programs, and we can try to see if they do have a problem, like an addiction. Arresting a student for possession of a substance like that is, again, it's, typically doesn't happen. There would have to be some kind of outstanding circumstance to justify the arrest, in my opinion, on that. So, yeah, we don't, that's, to me, that's a, it's not a, it's not minor in the sense that they shouldn't be doing it, but there's, I think there's more productive ways to deal with that situation than issuing a summons. Sorry.
Betty, and then Christine.
Um, what, what grade levels do you work with? Is it just one school, or is it multiple schools? And do you work with whole classes, or are you just basically on your, in the area?
So I deal with grades K through 12, and there are six schools that I'm responsible for. Most of the time, I'm at the high school and the junior high, it's a connected building, and that's where most of the, the, I guess you'd say, calls come from. Um, when I do interact with the elementary schools, it's along the lines of talking about stranger danger and those kinds of things. Or just going there just to interact with the, the younger children, so they see police officers in a, not such a confrontational or critical situation. As far as classrooms go, when I do speak to classroom settings, it's usually about dangerous drugs, that kind of thing, or we go over lockdown procedures, because it's pretty open with the, with the students on that. And this is the, I, I hate to say it this way, but this is the lockdown generation. These kids have come up from elementary school with that mindset. So when we go do our, our drills, instead of shutting them in rooms and, and doing that, we kind of, I go classroom to classroom and discuss what the procedures are. And then if the students have any questions or concerns, then they can, they can speak out right there, and we can try to answer those questions. It's a, it's a very stressful topic, but I find it's more successful and less stressful when you do it that way versus just standing back and saying, hey, we're in lockdown drill, everybody go and, and shut their doors and wait for someone to come get you. That way, you also get feedback, because you've got to remember, they're the ones sitting on the other side of that door for hours on end. So the more I interact with them, the more I learn. So, yeah, that's, that's what we typically do. But normally, I'm in the hallways, and the teachers, I try not to disrupt the teachers when they're doing their thing, so.
Christine?
Um, so I have two questions, but I'll go one at a time. If somebody else wants to ask one, I can, we, um, are you on any teams that meet regularly, like dropout prevention or, um, maybe threat assessment team?
Yeah.
Do you work with them?
Yes, we have a dropout prevention committee at the schools, and we typically talk about high-risk students. Uh, sometimes it's a question of finding out that the students no longer live in the district and never bother to inform anyone, so you go out to a house, it's now empty, and then we have to track down where they went. Other times, it's a student that, we have a program that recently was developed at this district that is designed specifically for students that traditional classroom settings aren't always the most successful for them. And we try to identify which students might be, might benefit the most from that. And I'm, I have made suggestions to those because of my interactions with students who have expressed to me that they just can't function in a regular classroom, for whatever reason it might be. But this other program is an alternate for them, and they found success with it. So, yeah, and as far as the threat assessment goes, yeah, we meet regularly. I speak with, with principals if there's an issue where they're a student that has any kind of warning signs that this student might be capable of doing something that's drastic. We try to interact with them, and if we do identify those students, it's to build, build a rapport with them and make them feel as if they belong. Because a lot of times, isolation leads to desperation, which leads to pretty violent situations. So we do take that very seriously.
So, okay, thanks. Um, the second question is related. Do you do, do you assist with truancy issues? Like do you home visits, do you talk with kids' parents, find out why a student might not be attending? Try to get them back into the school?
Yes, we do that, and, and as, as you may know, the truancy process is very convoluted. But once it gets to that level where interact, we need to do something, we, we go out, we do home visits. I work with the guidance counselors quite a bit, and we will do home visits together. So that adds another element of comfort, because it's not just a police officer banging on the door. And we discern, we just try to determine what's going on in the home. Is there hardship in the home? Is there, is there a transportation in, in the home that, that's at an issue? Because we've had that before, where, where parents have been in a, in a bad financial spot, and they just didn't have their, they couldn't get their kids to school because of transportation. And we've arranged to have transportation for them, which has helped some. And then there's some cases where there's just lack of involvement in the home, and that needs to be addressed, and usually we're with outside agencies for that, such as DHS. So yeah, we do, we do do that regularly. And if we get any kind of information that there's a student, whether it's a social media post or some sort of behavior that was displayed at school, where we need to check in on the home, we, we do that in a, in a manner that's not intrusive as, as much as it can be. And we also try to include parents in that, because sometimes parents are unaware. And I'm sure you are all aware of the challenges that social media poses to everybody. You could have the most vigilant parent in the world who is unaware that their student had, or their child has a social media app that's hidden on their phone. And when they find that out, it's a shock. But that's, so it's not always a case where it's an abusive parent or a neglectful parent. Sometimes it's just a very resourceful student, and that's our job to find out which it is.
Kelty, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, and thank you for being here. I appreciate your time. This is helpful information. And I guess I was hoping you might have some fun statistics up your sleeve. Maybe not, and that's okay, but I, I think the deterrent part is, is a really heavy factor here. And so I'm wondering if you have ever noticed schools with SROs, if they have less drug situations and expulsions and problems versus schools that don't have one, or any kind of comparison with schools that do, schools that don't, um, in that regard?
Right. Well, I don't have the statistics, no, I do not, so I apologize for that. Um, I can tell you that when I first started there, they, they had an SRO program, and it, and it was, it stopped for some, but there was a variety of reasons why it stopped, and I'm not sure exactly why, that was before I got there. But when I got there, there were, we did have some issues with some, it was, it was pretty rowdy at first, but just being in there, being present, and being the interaction you have with students, it's important for an SRO not to walk into a building with an attitude or this cocky, like, swagger about them. And they have to have a short memory and thick skin, because things get said that, yeah, you've got to let it go, because you're dealing with juveniles. But since I've been there, things have quieted down a lot as far as violence in the school, that fights and that sort of thing. The statistics I couldn't provide to you, but my advice to you on that would be, there are some area school districts that have SROs. I would reach out to those administrators and those superintendents and get their impression of what's working and what isn't, because they're speaking from your perspective. Because I could stand up here all day and tell you how great it is to be an SRO and how wonderful that program is. Because I could stand up here all day and tell you how great it is to be an SRO and how wonderful that program is. But those people are the ones that can probably relate to you better as far as answering those kinds of questions. And they say this is what's working for us, this is what isn't, this is what we like about it, this is what we don't like about it. And we're always looking to improve anyway. And as far as me, my evaluations for my performance evaluation. So just in case there's a question about, well, how do we know what the SRO is doing, how do we not? The supervisors that evaluate me for the sheriff's office will communicate with the building administrators at the school and they'll say, what's going on there? How's he doing, is he performing well, is there any room for improvement, is there any complaints? And that's how you guys are finding out if this is working or if this is effective based on people in from your perspective. As opposed to the sheriff coming in and saying, well, he sounds like he's doing a good job, but. He only knows what he's told from them because that's an informative decision. But as far as statistics go, I'm not a big statistical guy because a lot of times stats can be manipulated or misleading and it could prove your point or disprove your point. That's why I would recommend you talk to those people that have worked alongside these SROs in these other districts, get a get a multitude of opinions on it. Before you make a decision to invest in something like this, I would I would definitely do that if I was you.
Thank you.
Yeah, fun statistics, um, as a positive influence in a school. And because we're career minded, have you influenced enough kid in your eight years, do you think that turned him around and? Some have gone on to maybe law enforcement because of your presence and your positive.
Well, I can tell you that we recently made a conditional offer to a former Lawrence student. Who's now going to be working with us and um. I've had another. Former student that is currently in law enforcement that graduated a few years back. But it's to me, it's not about if they become police officers, it's like, do they have success outside? And I have seen some students that struggled in school. And we've done some. Some major league talking and now that they they are, there's one student in particular that I can think of that has started his own business. And that's a student that people would have said, well, what's he going to do when he gets out of here, what's your plan, buddy, you know, and and he has one and he's doing really well. Unfortunately, there's some that you couldn't, you know, do much for and they they made bad decisions. But. You never give up on them. All the way to the last day of school and I have seen some students after that they've graduated. And what's funny is that they're adults, but they still refer to me as Deputy Day, which is kind of funny to me, but. It's that's a good feeling. I I I'm very protective. Of the students at my district, like I like look at them as as an extension of me. So. When one of them is 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 down, I'm down. And this job can be very rewarding. In fact, it's probably the most rewarding job I've ever had in law enforcement, but can also be the most heartbreaking. And that's 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 one of the challenging aspects of this particular job, but if you get someone in here. That will eventually bond with their students. And again, they're going to try to direct in a can to get them back on the straight path without overstepping. Because there's a very fine line between being a positive influence and then overstepping and trying to overtake what parents are doing. That's why it's important to be on the same page with parents as much as possible. Because, you know. You could say a lot of things that could be. Counterproductive to what you're trying to accomplish with these with these students, so yeah.
Nice, that's exactly what I'm hoping for. Awesome, and it sounds like you've made some. Most differences with these kids.
Go ahead.
Do you transfer down here?
Robin, did you have another question?
I'm going to go back to the question about possession. One of my concerns as a teacher um at the school is that what is the possibility or likelihood that a student would be actually arrested on campus? If my concern is just having arrests occur on campus and making the school. Be a place that a student can be arrested, would you more likely, if there wasn't an arrest necessary, would you more likely arrest him on campus? So would you do that, something else? Uh, my first question. My second question is more about what is the school's involvement in the selection of an officer? And what things are we able to request? Um, in terms of in that selection of the officer, and I had a number of things, but I. Over those two right now.
So the first question about arresting a student on campus, that would be a an extreme situation. And we're talking about an extreme violent act that that just unfolded right in front of you. If a student is going to be arrested, it's very rarely does it involve putting them in handcuffs and escorting them out of the building. Most likely it's going to be a summons and it's done in private with parents present. And also you should know that one of the responsibilities for a school resource officer, in addition to the physical protection. And, you know, mental health protection is also protecting students constitutional rights. Because students can, you know, there are illegal searches, don't care have that happen. And you also, I want to make sure that everybody knows that uh when you do select your SRO to make sure they understand that this isn't going to be an extension of a substation. Where a police officer is going to walk through the door and start randomly interviewing students without. Without those students understanding what their rights are, the SRO is there to protect those students and understand, so they understand what their constitutional rights are. So if there is going to be a search of the student for whatever reason it might be. There is a certain expectation by everybody involved that nobody's rights are violated. So as far as the selection process goes, yes, the school is definitely involved in that, school board is involved in it, building administrators should be involved in it. And when you do that selection process, there are certain considerations that you need to take in to mind. Um, I believe I believe that. There's there's a school resource officer in addition to having solid interpersonal skills, needs to have a certain level of maturity. A lot of humility, but also having a tactical background because again, the one thing that we. We don't like to talk about it, but it isn't, it's an actual thing is that sometimes schools get targeted. And that school resource officer needs to have the the tactical background to be able to handle that situation to the best. Possible outcome. Because you don't want to put someone in here who is not prepared for that. So that's going to be, that would be part of your selection process, but again, somebody who can. Go to a certain place. Deal with the the situation that's in front of them versus failing. Because that's what you don't want to happen because we have seen cases where school resource officers have been faced that kind of decision and they failed spectacularly. But we've also seen situations where school resource officers have faced that and they've gone above and beyond. So when you so if you decide to do this and you go through your selection process. Those are those are questions that I would have, those are things I would want to know, you talk about background, what kind of background did you have? Those are excellent points you made about the mental health aspect of it. But also find out what their tactical background is because that's going to be important. So. What, did you have additional ones? So typically my evaluations come from the sheriff's office, but what happens is, and I don't know if you want to speak on that or not, but. The supervisor will contact the building administrators and they'll talk to people in the school. And they get basically, I'm, I guess I'm being evaluated by the principals and the superintendent. But the sheriff's office is still actually doing it, but they're getting their information on my performance through those people that I work with. Because honestly, I see the school staff more than I see these guys here, like. There's, I got to tell you, there's some guys that we've hired that I've never met because I'm at the school primarily. So. The building administrators, they're going to have more of a of an insight on what I'm doing versus versus you, I guess. As far as I know, but who knows?
And if, you know, it's like myself, I I'll go up there just to. Say hello to Jeremy. And just walk around. And talk with people. And they'll tell you how they're doing. And they love Jeremy. It's. He's done a fantastic job, he is an asset, that school system, he's an asset. My agency. He's a good one and no day. But you know, with the uh, when it comes to hiring. A deputy to come into this position. I would definitely want somebody from this school system or however many people you want. We'll talk about it, I'll I'll tell you why I may reach out to a person or why this person is good or why they won't be good. And again, it should be somebody with some tenure. Uh, that's very important.
Are there any other questions? Go ahead.
I'm Leslie Marco, I'm from Mount Vernon, unfortunately, I accumulated a couple of questions too. They start to stack up quick aside from my citizens comment a little bit. Um, one of the questions I had for you was, have you been able to see your student, uh, your school resource officer program evolve over time? Finding new ways to do things a little differently and a little better? And a second question I have was, um, I'm trying to recall what you said when you were hired. Was that at the restart of Lawrence having a school resource officer, so you were back at the beginning again? As far as getting a program back off the ground again? I wonder if you could speak to sort of the clearly defined um. Boundaries of the program that makes it really clear about roles and responsibilities. Between the schools and the student resource officers that really is the guidance. To know and whether that's established sort of in advance. And then you work to hire based on what you're looking to achieve and how that will work in in a particular school. And then maybe what's hired, are you able to then have a conversation around? You know, this I think might work better here that, you know, just so that the program is a little fluid. Over time is one.
All right, so when I first started, um, what I did initially was a lot of observation. And I was learning how to best interact with certain students based on experienced teachers and special needs instructors. And after I learned from them, then I started doing that myself, but. Ultimately, when you start a program like this, it is entirely on the school resource officer to. Build that rapport and earn that trust with the students and earn the respect. And that's going to take time. And like I said before, you're going to have to have some humility in the position, you have to be able to willing to. Have a lot of patience and learn and be willing to learn from any mistakes that you might make along the way. Fortunately, I had a great support group with me with the building administrators that were that were installed there. Uh, teachers that would let me know that this particular student responds to this or that particular student responds to that. And you have to be willing to do that, you have to be willing to set aside and you can't have ego in this job, that's for sure. Because if you do, you're not going to learn. So as far as improving goes. What I was looking for initially was I was staying in my element, which was safety. And I was looking for any areas of improvement as far as structural to the school, what can we do to improve the safety of the building? What can we do to improve the safety of the interior? And now that I've been there sometime, I'm able to actively participate in policy as it relates to school safety, as it relates to. Lockdowns, lockouts, shelter in place, those kinds of things. Outside of that, my responsibilities as far as policymaking, that's strictly on the building administrators, like the sheriff said earlier, I do not take a role in that. That's not my place to do that. And improving. It's it's every year is an improvement because. Again, I keep going back to tragedies at school. You have certain policies in place and certain procedures in place that seem effective at the time. And then an event happens and I researched that to find out what was effective, what are we doing that worked? And what do we have in place that they had in place that didn't work and how can we improve that? It's a very tragic thing and it's not fun, but that's one of the reasons, that's one of the areas where we have to improve on. Um, my, I think my my interaction with students have improved dramatically from my first year. Because it's like you go, it's you want to, your tendency is to go to the elementary school because that's easy because those kids are like, they're like little kids, you're like. Happy to see you. Yeah, they're they're little and then you go to the high school, you don't want to, you're like, oh, kind of left it because high school kids, it's like a little bit of, I don't know if I should, how to interact with these guys yet. But now it's. Now, when I go to the elementary schools, it's the, you know, I feel. Everything's good, it's like it's it's now like, and I've known a lot of these kids too from when they were in elementary school. And if you get a long term SRO, that's a big help because you remember these kids when they were little. And one of the familiar faces in the building is the SRO because they say, oh, it's Stephanie Dave when they were in second grade, now they're seniors and they are huge and it's it's quite the transition. But. Yeah, I think that. It's a constant improvement and you have to, if you try to think you're setting your ways and you've got it made, then you're failing, so. And I, you had some other questions too, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks for bringing them up.
Um, I I'll ask another multi tier question if you will. Um, with your position as you currently have. Existed in it reaching, does it reach beyond the the four walls of the school? Does it go into the community in a way? That parents maybe reach out to you to say, hey, I'm not so sure about my oldest. Or what my oldest maybe has shared with me. Do parents reach out to you to make some of that connection? Um, knowing and holding true to the whole theory of it being very preventative and trying to keep things very minimal and trying to be ahead. Of what happens and so the second part of that, I think would tie back to what a couple of people have asked, which would be. In turn, if there is a student. That back on a theory of possession. Where there's an established program that is the deterrent, the deterrent program that takes someone down the path, they have to leave. Or they have to engage in a program that may last a certain number of weeks in order to sort of. Layout sort of the educational process for them to have sort of cleared the scenario, the infraction, the situation. And sort of clean us clearly again, can you just talk more about those two?
So. As far as parents reaching out, yeah, that does happen, especially if you have a a. Interact or a history with that particular student, you'd start to work with those families a little closer. And the parents. Will sometimes feel more comfortable coming to you as a school resource officer as opposed to. A deputy or someone on the street that they don't have that relationship with because of various reasons. Um, so that does happen. Other times and. This has been a challenge too is social media, there's there's what actually happens and then there's social media. And the SRO has to sort through what is rumor, what's been conflated, what's actually going on. And parents will call in and they'll say, hey, I heard this on Facebook, is this happening? And I have to explain, you know, what's going on versus what you're seeing. So that can be a challenge, as far as the restorative practices go. That is the ultimate goal for everyone and again, it's kept as quiet as possible as far as, you know, we don't want to create. A situation where now the student feels like there's a target on their back or they're being looked at sideways by teachers and staff. One of the biggest drawbacks that we have as far as the maintaining the that integrity is that. Students will get online themselves and out themselves and sex thing, you know, it's all over the place. So I encourage students not to do that, but sometimes they they just do. A lot of times it's for support and a lot of times it's just for that attention they're getting because. They're they're hurting for it. But again, the SRO has hit the the role that the SRO is to. Try to, I don't want to say save because that sounds dramatic, but try to redirect students as as much as we can. To keep them from continuing that side of destructive type behavior. But yeah, we do have programs and we do work and the and the unfortunate event where we do have to make a some sort of summons. We work with our with the juvenile probation officers. Quite regularly and they'll they'll ask for like what background we have on them or what kind of relationship. And it helps smooth that process, so when that probation officer has to meet with that student, it's not as. It's not as confrontational as it could be, it's not as anxious as it could be because there the meeting is is more laid back. As opposed to, oh, now you're going here and now you're going there. And I will communicate with the JCCOs in that respect to make sure that the student is getting what they need at school and the supports they need in the home. And sometimes students, it's it's a challenge, but other times it's just maybe they screwed up once and they just need to push in the right direction. So that does happen as well too. So. Okay. Thank you.
Just one second, just one second, are there any other questions from the board? Go ahead. Sorry, I have so many questions, but I don't know if we're going to have a chance to talk about some of these things when you're not here, so um.
did we get information about cost of the program? And I'm wondering, so cost? And then I'm wondering if there's any breakdown of the cost in terms of what is salary, what might go to equipment? Is it a shared cost with the deputies or the sheriff's office? So that would be helpful to know.
To bring on a new employee specific for this job is $140,000. Okay. Now that's everything that that person needs. Cars, uniforms, all the accoutrements that go with this salary benefits. It's approximately $140,000. Now that's for the first year. The following years, it, it cuts way down because you already have all those things you had to buy to outfit that person. Hey, I just can't pluck somebody from the patrol division and not fill that hole. All right. I don't have the exact breakdowns for that. I can certainly provide you with those.
I don't need the breakdown. I just, you answered the question when you said that's a total cost for all of the equipment and other things that would be needed. But if you knew what it was roughly in subsequent years after the initial year of 140K, that would be.
It's about, they pay us about $60,000 to have him at the school. Okay. It really, we go by, it's really, we find it so beneficial that we're losing a little bit money, but we're not. It, it's priceless. Okay. And we have them during the summer months. Okay. He, school's not in session, so they'll hit the road. So it benefits us. So I couldn't charge him the whole amount because I've actually got him for about three months. Where he's serving other citizens of this county.
Thank you.
Following that and speaking specifically of summer, if there was, as there usually is to some degree for part of the summer, their summer school where the school is operating, that would, would you folks be able to work with that?
I, I think we could. I'd have to find out about it first before I can make a, a, a good decision. Do they have summer school? How does that work for you?
It's never been brought up. But I would happily work summer school.
So that would depend on what we ask sort of.
Right. What, what do you need? That's that's what we need.
Any other questions from the board? Any other citizen questions? Sure.
Response time to bring up community school. The response time out to this school.
It depends on where the people are. I mean, if I, if, if I'm close to my home, very short period of time. If Dana's, Dane's going to get the call too, he's going to, he's going to know what's going on. I, that's so hard to forget. But if there is a, if there is an SRO that's here. Or part of his or her duties is he goes over to Reed Field or to Mount Vernon or to Bay Yet. The response time from here, because this would be the big car in this machine would be far faster than coming from Sydney, Augusta, Gardner, or wherever they may be, Randall.
I can also, so one of the, one of the things that, because I am the only SRO in that district, there are six schools and Albion Elementary is one of them and it's pretty far out there. I could tell you that I had to respond out there from Lawrence, which is, and it was a code run because code run means lights and sirens because there was a subject in the parking lot that was behaving erratically. And it was a 14-minute drive and that's coming from, but I was the closest comparatively because there was a state trooper that was tied up with an arrest and it was a deputy that was tied up with an arrest. So having a school resource officer in the area is, it's a good thing as far as response time, but if you do go with an SRO, I would strongly suggest your SROs make those trips and see what that response time looks like under normal conditions. So they have an idea of how long it would take. So you can get a concrete answer of this is how long it takes under normal conditions and this is how long it takes under extreme conditions. And there's other factors to consider too, like weather, if the roads are icy, if it's raining. So it's like the sheriff said, it's hard to predict what those could be. And if you do go with a school resource officer, I would, it's, it's important that the SRO dedicates their time to the school. As far as like vacation time should not, I mean, I don't take vacation time during the school year. Because if I'm not where I'm supposed to be, something could happen. I couldn't, I couldn't live with that. So you need to have somebody that's dedicated to your district. So when, if you do go with that, go that route, make sure it's somebody who wants to do it, wants to be here and is going to give you all of that. Okay. All right.
Well, well, backing away. Does anybody else have anything or good?
Any other questions from the board? Robin, did you have another question or anybody else? So thank you so much for coming and giving us all this information. We really appreciate the time that you, you've spent here tonight and the, and the answers that you've given us have been very helpful in leading us to the next step of making a decision. And you sure you don't want to come here?
He, he would be an asset to. He certainly will be. You know, we're, I, I would look forward to working directly with the school system. I've, I've been working with the school system now for a very long time. It's a great community. SROs are a positive thing. They really are. Just got to find that right person, whoever he or she may be.
Great. Thanks again. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I'm a little behind the eight ball and I, I will admit I am, I have not been in favor of an SRO for the, quite a few times that it's been brought up here at the district. But if I could have someone like Deputy Day, I might consider it. But I wanted to catch up with one, I had three questions, but the one, how much will it cost? It already been answered. My first question is, why are we looking into an SRO? What's, what is usually if there's a, usually there's a problem and we're trying to fix it. And so we're looking at solving the problem and I'm kind of wondering what do you perceive as the problem and why an SRO? And then my second question is, what do we, where do we anticipate that SRO to be spending time? Are we looking at the SRO to be basically here or rotating around the different schools in the district?
Good question.
So Robin, I think I can say, and I would invite any board member to jump on board here if I'm misspeaking or mischaracterizing anything. I think when we look at what has happened across schools in the United States, that safety has kind of risen to the forefront of the basic need for all students. Like if you don't feel safe, you can't learn. So I think, and I'm kind of, again, kind of summarizing, but I think the basic thrust of this has been around safety and what can we do to increase safety within the district? That's kind of a simplistic answer, but that's kind of, I think, and again, the board can jump in if I'm oversimplifying in any way. The other thing, or the other question, Robin, is we look at this SRO to be, their main focus will be on this campus, the, the, the middle school and high school. But we would be looking at including them at all of our elementary schools. So you heard Deputy talk about, he has six building schools that he looks at. This person would be playing a role in all six of our, our schools, our four elementary schools, middle school and high school. But more than likely, their main base would be like he was saying, the, this campus. So I hope that is simple. And again, board members can jump in if you want to add anything.
Anyone? Okay. No questions, no more comments or anything, then we'll move on the agenda. So the next thing is citizen comments on topics that are not SRO or the budget. Is there any, are there any? Do you have another comment? Yes, right. Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Um, so a reminder, Leslie Marco, I live in Mount Vernon. I have two children that go to Reed Field Elementary. I have one that has entered the middle school here in sixth grade. I am a graduate of this high school and I used to lead cross-country stretch warmups where we're standing roughly, which was a field. So I thank you all that are here. I thank folks that are attending from afar and I thank the folks who gave me the nudge to say, hey, they're going to talk about this. And I didn't know if you had something you'd like to share. So in the time I've been made aware of the chance to weigh in, I've engaged in discussions and have watched presentations and have reviewed infrastructure and legislation and have looked around our state for information. I found what I was more interested in, which is very funny and we didn't plan this, but why not have a school resource officer, which is the opposite of where my friend, I already forgot her name, was coming from, but both sides are equally important. That there's an opportunity to take a well-established program. We, we don't need to create, reinvent any wheel, but we need to find the right wheel that might fit this community and this school organization. And it's an opportunity to take that and tailor it to exactly what we're trying to accomplish and meet the needs of what we have here very close to home. With the right program, which I do not think that you have to pull and just take what exists and say that goes here. I think you can take a program, you can tailor it with the right expectations and the right partnership, the right support, putting the right person into the role. You have a greater chance to support the health of the learning environment and impact that are impacted by social issues supportive positively by local agency resources, which in the research I've done, there's a lot of deferment out to local agencies and resources to help families and kids across a whole number of topics. There is legislation that requires different training from school resource officers than just coming out of the academy. Last, my chance, and dedicate, so back to, I threw in a ton of carrots there. Dedicated, dedicated school administrations and educational staff, we can deter and prevent negative situations as they start small from growing in this environment when our focus is back to the header of your agenda. You listed out a number of things there and when safety was still talked about, if kids don't feel that they can safely come to school or safely speak to someone about anything and that something may not feel like it's appropriate for a member of our school administration. You just want people to talk about something and talk about it with someone. And I think that what you will find, there is value in what is measured does get improved. I did review programs where there was good statistics across a whole range of how the connection of calls, calls to the local law enforcement agencies connected to the calls by our SROs and the range of topics those covered. And you could definitely see at the start of a quarter for an SRO, things started in a very criminally threaded sort of trend. And I say that only from the place that that's the stuff that can be very black and white. That's the stuff that's available when they first come in. That's probably something that's easier or low hanging fruit to try to get at first. And then towards the third quarter of the report, I happened to see, you saw the kid behavior shift to the trust where they were reporting more on harassment or they were reporting more on sexual assault or they were reporting more on these other topics that are not so black and white. So I think that I just encourage, I know there are decisions tonight, there is a lot of information out there, including a recent article from the summertime where the, there, I think in Lisbon, were encouraged to apply for a grant, a government grant that could pay for 75% of the salary of an SRO for the first three years. And I'm sure that doesn't cover the other, get in the car and doing the things. But from maybe just the base salary standpoint, and that's a good chunk of time and a good chunk of benefit for us to get our feet under ourselves and start to gain some momentum so that we could do some of that more on our own. But most of all, I'd encourage you to survey our community and get their feedback. Positive or negative nurture and encourage the response of both. Because things that go in either direction can be put into how we solve and structure a program like this that will work.
Thank you, Leslie. And I, I do want to just say that when Jay and David and I first met with the sheriff to talk about this, what, a month or so ago? One of the things that we were really focused on is, is making sure that we could not really design the program, but set the boundaries and the roles and responsibilities for what we wanted and what our district needed. And they were very clear that that's exactly what they wanted as well. So that's going to be if we move forward with this, that's going to be a big part of getting that input from everybody. But what is it we really want with our SRO? Except for we want Deputy Day, but other than that. But in the other thing. Right. And we are going to do a survey and Jay was going to talk about, that is our next step. Our next step is send a survey out to all of our community, all of our staff to really get a feel and get input from them about how they feel about this. So thank you for your information. And thank you for, for telling, giving all of that to us. We appreciate that. Robin? Yes. Yes.
Yep. So is it okay if I talk about it right now? So I designed a very simple survey to, obviously, I want to keep it very simple, but get the information we need. So basically the first question is, what are you? Are you a student? Are you a staff member? Are you a parent? Are you a community member? That kind of thing. And then the very simple question of, are you in favor of an SRO here in RSU 38, yes or no? And then we can break it out by the subgroup. So that way we kind of have a little bit of data to look at. My plan was to send that out either tomorrow or Friday, leave it open and then bring the results back to the February 1st meeting of the board, which is a couple of weeks away. So we would send multiple reminders, use our notification system and try to encourage as many people as possible to kind of weigh in so the board can take a look at that information. But yes, Robin, we definitely want its students to be part of this. So.
We want to get it out there as many ways.
That's a really good idea. That's a good idea.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I have nobody that signed up for general citizen comments tonight. That's still true? Looks that way. Okay. Any additions or adjustments to the agenda from board or superintendent?
I don't have any.
So we'll go on to our action items. Is there a motion to approve the special meeting, special board meeting minutes of January 4th?
I'm moved to approve of the special board meeting minutes of January 4th, 2023.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the special board meeting minutes of January 4th, 2023. Any discussion?
David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Tyler? Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Patty's not here. Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
I'm staying.
Kelty?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
Esme?
abstain.
So we had three extensions and four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. So I'm just guessing that the people that abstained were because you weren't here. Correct. Okay, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January fourth?
And we approve the regular board meeting minutes of January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January fourth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dane? Tyler?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean? Kelty?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Esme?
Yes.
One abstention, the rest all pass. Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the special board meeting of January ninth, twenty twenty-three?
And we approve the minutes of the special meeting on January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Second.
So been moved and seconded to approve the special board meeting minutes of January ninth, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
abstain.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
And Esme?
abstain.
So two extensions. And again, the extensions because that you weren't here. You're good? So is there a motion to approve the special board minute meetings of January eleventh, twenty twenty-three?
I move to the approval of special board meeting minutes of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the special board meeting minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we can vote. David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yeah.
Christine?
abstain.
Kathy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
abstain.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
And Esme?
abstain.
Three extensions. And those extensions were because you weren't here. So is there a motion to, for the awarding of the municipal lease for the school bus?
I move the resolution entire entitled resolution to authorize lease purchase of one new school bus in the principal amount of up to one hundred seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. The adopted inform presented to this meeting.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to, for the awarding of the municipal lease to the school bus. Can I explain? And Jay's going to explain. So you're probably getting a deja vu right now. That is because the bank that we use needs a legal opinion before we can enter into the contract with the bank. So we had to get the legal opinion, which we did, but we need a vote after the legal opinion. So it was an oversight on our part. So deja vu, but we're making it right. And any other? Yeah. I have. Manny? It didn't change? Okay. Hold on, let's check. Yeah. Right. Yes, yes, yes. Good question. Yep. Trying to make it right. Any other discussion? Okay, we can vote. Okay. David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Kelty?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
And Esme?
Yes.
So unanimous.
Zero motion for the ratification of first probationary contract teacher at Reed Field Elementary School, grade five, Xavier Trask.
I move that we approve the ratified first probationary contract teacher at R E S, grade five, Xavier Trask.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve the first probationary contract teacher Xavier Trask. Any discussion? No? All righty. David G?
Yes.
Jade?
Yes.
Annie?
Yes.
Dane?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yeah.
Christine?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yeah.
Betty?
Yes.
Sean?
Even though my son's going to miss his current teacher. Yes.
Kelty?
Yes.
David T?
Yes.
And Esme?
Yes.
So passes unanimously.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
I should have asked Mr. Bossman. What are the parents going to be able to meet the teacher before?
Yes.
I can open answers.
Yeah.
I was told to ask that, but I didn't want to jump up and ask. All right, that would be great. Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So we have policy first readings for just that first. Just that one for evaluation of administration. Anybody have any questions or? Comments? If they have any. If not now, you can send them to us. Our next meeting is coming up. Yeah, yeah. Not sure exactly when it is. Okay, so the next on our agenda is the consideration of some new high school course requests. Is there a motion?
I move that we approve the high school course request as listed on the agenda.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve all of the courses that have been brought for us for approval. Yep. Any discussion? So before you do the questions, I'm going to actually invite Dr. Karen Smith up because she worked closely with the teachers through this process. So she'll hopefully be able to help direct any questions or get answers to any questions. So, thank you. All right. Did you have a question?
I'm just curious. Specifically the street law. Right. So actually, Michelle La Forge Principal is online and she has a presentation to show. We had gone through the Board Curriculum Committee last week and had the teachers present the courses that they developed. And so Dylan Saroy was responsible for the four social studies classes, Bill Babbitt for the three math classes, Travis Magnussen for the Health and Peace Course, and Jeremy Smith for the one art course or visual art course. And so without further ado, I believe Diane has Michelle on the queue or?
The shared screen.
Can you hear me, Diane? So before Michelle talks, I just want to let the board know that at the curriculum committee meeting that we, that we attended, we got a really thorough description of all of these courses and exactly, we had lots of questions that we asked and were answered. And by the time we heard all the information on all of these courses, we all as a curriculum committee voted to approve all of these courses and bring them to you for approval. So I just wanted to let you know that, and you want to add, I don't know if you want to add anything.
No, just.
That, you know, we thought that they would be.
Great presentations, really thorough.
But it was very thorough and. Nope, just Michelle.
Just me.
No, she sent you the slideshow. Can't do it. Or you can ask her. Do people want that? It's quite a presentation. So we're not going to have. Oh, I see what she has. She has. Yeah, it's entirely up to you. Go ahead, Sean.
Maybe this will be answered, but why are we adding these courses? How, what courses are we losing?
So can we go through the presentation?
Because I have some questions.
Yeah.
Um, do. Diane, would you like me to run the presentation? I can't seem to share my screen.
Yeah, Michelle, can you turn now?
Sure. Ah, that is good. Although. Oh, let's see. It is not allowing me to still, Diane. It, I got farther this time. But now it asked me to set my Zoom preferences and yet nothing is enabled for me to, to change.
Diane will just share her screen.
I'm sorry. And I can also just answer the questions asked, but I do think that that the presentation isn't long. I think that the, I will say the spectacular presentation that some of that, that you got to see last week, part of it was Dylan Saroy's social studies classes. And I, my presentation is a little bit simpler. This page, this opening page, I just wanted to show you the five steps that we are now taking. You know, through our advice from our curriculum director, Dr. Smith, is that we are, and, and our SAC work is that, you know, somebody has an idea, somebody has a reason for that idea. It might come in conversation with a guidance counselor or with students often. And then it goes to the department and to the SAC work, which is often a mix of high school and middle school. And then moves on to the entire district leadership group, like a group of teachers within the district, teachers and administrators, they approved it one after another. We voted, we use, you know, we have protocols that we use. They were approved there and they were presented there. And then last week on the twelfth, we went to the Board Curriculum Committee and we presented again. And now we're here to tell you a little bit about the thinking. And, you know, to kind of get started on one of the questions, it's been a number of years since we've been through a process like this in order to introduce new courses. And it's good and healthy for us to be looking at our curricula and, and, and knowing, you know, what we are as expert educators, you know, to eventually touch on Dane's question. You know, we don't have a lawyer teaching this class, but we do have expert social studies teachers who have, you know, who reference and work with guest speakers and guest programs all the time. I've sent some out this year. Shane Gower in particular has had a number of really prestigious professionals in on a variety of topics. So, you know, for all these reasons, updating some of our social studies courses in the case of our computer science courses, which I'll tell you, it means bringing something in that's long overdue. And then there's a couple more courses and they have their own purpose. So Diane, if you could turn the page, we'll get started. Social studies departments suggest recommending four new elective courses. They are aligned with standards. The names of those courses you can see in the full proposals have been in the materials or in the materials in the back of this presentation, among others. Street law, criminal psychology, current events and global issues and Holocaust studies. Again, the context for these changes comes out of the work that we do cyclically, reviewing our curriculum, aligning with state and national standards. Best practice in instruction and assessment and curriculum for what our students should be learning. So you can see a little bit there. It was approved on December twenty-second and they do not require any additional staffing. We have been offering psychology, criminal psychology is a change and updating that comes directly from student interest. And some of the new practice, unsurprisingly, is meant to align with students' interests to connect relevance to the curriculum that we're teaching. And you can see it in there. So if you turn the page one more time, Diane, you can see the map of where and when you might take these courses. So the last reason to introduce some new electives and redesign the folk I of those electives is to include more students and to give as much choice as possible to even our youngest students in the high school. So again, you can look a little bit more closely, but it shows you some other electives we have and how they all line up. We're off, we're requesting and proposing three new elective courses in computer science, one of which is actually not new, computer science discoveries was taught in past years, but really certainly needs a refresher, needs a new explanation to you all about the curriculum that we're offering. But I think that it goes without saying that computer science is increasingly relevant in our world. What doesn't go without saying and speaking as a longtime math teacher and business person, my work in the world, but it's not in education for a number of years. Having computer science is a much more diverse program than many of us think. We immediately jumped to programming and we certainly are looking to offer a programming course. But a lot of the work that you do as a computer programmer includes now design elements, everything from the gamification of professional development and teaching tools and logic, which is in almost every college across the country, cross-listed logic classes are cross-listed between philosophy and math and computer science. So we're also looking, you're looking embedded here at an opportunity for our students who are interested in computer science to build some of their math strength here. It may eventually overlap with some social science work in statistics. So it's an area that not only are we not offering, it's a hole that I'd like to fill, but it also offers in our, you know, growth for our future in creating pathways for individual students based on their interest. And they would be part of the math program. You can see the computer science requirements in the context of math here. And then if you turn the page, you can see these computer science courses in the context of the tech and career field because there's some overlap. Moving on, we are looking to offer a new PE health elective course, sports training and methods of overall improvement. Again, came out of student interest in moving beyond the courses that are already offered. We have students who are taking some of our PE electives three, four, or five times, which instead of study halls. So they're not replacing them, you know, they're not replacing their math classes, but they love the field. They're interested in moving beyond it, or they may just want that break in their day to do something that they love and makes them stronger. It's aligned with standards. It was approved throughout and wouldn't require any additional staffing. In a minute, you'll see that we did a poll through the, did a survey through our guidance department to see what kind of student interest there would be before we propose these. So you'll see in a minute, there's quite a bit of interest around this and in fact, around all our courses. Moving on, that's the entire map of kind of how the classes Moving on, that's the entire map of kind of how the classes connect. And once they've taken PE, this would be available to almost any student. And then last but not least, in our art department, we're offering a ceramics three course. We already have a ceramics two course. They take place in the same room at the same time as ceramics one. And, you know, the, the main question is always like, can you really do that? Well, you certainly can, or we wouldn't be requesting it in this case and proposing it. New glazing techniques, different ways of, of creation are all things that our art department thinks that our students who want to extend their learning should be allowed to do. There's really, I don't see any downside. There's no additional staff needed. It just allows, you know, in a small school like ours, it is hard sometimes to, hard but worth it to help our students who are really invested in, in one field or another to go as far as they can go before they move on to higher education or the next part of their journey as professionals. Last but not least, there's the sequence and then I think you get the results of the survey. And you can see criminal psychology has, um, this was a, a survey that 100, we had 111 responses on. And to give you a sense of, that's a very good response because we have about 360 students. We didn't give it to seniors because they are moving on. So about 240 students were offered the survey, some of whom were absent. So we've got about a 50% you know, survey response, which is more than decent. When you look at 82 students, you're really talking about four sections. Current events, Holocaust studies and street law, all getting really respectable sets of interest, computer science is lower, but that's just true in the world. Doesn't mean that we don't need to teach computer science. And then sports training, we're really looking at two sections there. Intercultural studies is a, is a topic for another day and, and the future. So we just wanted to get some advanced interest in what they were interested in. And I believe the last page gives you a link to all the specific proposals. And there you go.
Questions? Do the questions that were there answered?
So what, so there's no new staff added? So something, I mean, we hear all the time, teachers loads are full. So what's getting lost here? Something hap, what students might be able to take something?
Well, listen, let me, yeah, and let me, I can answer both of those things. The first thing is I should have highlighted in my presentation, computer science will take some additional staff. There, we have, because we don't have that program right now. So to add a whole program, absolutely, we would need additional staff. There are some ways to do that in a phased way, which you will see come out in the budget process. But you should be looking for that computer science or a math person to offset that computer science. That's the only place there's additional staff. In the other cases, ceramics doesn't require any additional staff because it will take place within the same course structure. When you're talking about the sports training, it is a replacement for, we offer now probably three or four sections of net sports. For instance, we could go down a section there and up a section in sports training. And honestly, I think Brent, Brent Remington, our AD will probably play a role in that sports training course as well. Giving the students, you know, sort of a breadth of experience. So that's, that's one, that's that last piece. And then in social studies, yes, we are for the most part updating what we already have. We have been doing a course for some time called living history. And that is just, that numbers have been shrinking and it is, you know, not where this current social studies department is finding energy among our student population. So they took the opportunity to review what was there. We do offer psychology, this will allow us to provide an additional sort of slant on it. The other thing that I, you know, we have ways of, of offering new courses without new staff. And one of them is to offer courses every other year. So in a smaller school, you might see AP physics offered alternately with AP chemistry. When you don't have the staff to cover both every single year, you make sure that every junior and senior, some kids might take it as a junior, some kids might take it as a senior. So to answer the import of your question, especially those social studies courses, some of them are updating and replacing things that already exist. And others are going to lean on some of the strategies we use to keep a small school's curriculum and offerings really vibrant and interesting.
And Sean, that's part of kind of like this new revised process. And that Michelle and I discussed and talked to the staff leaders about, you know, what is the capacity of offering this course and, and doing that course cycling? And also doing back, you know, the teacher load to ensure that we're working within capacity and, and exhausting that first before seeking any additional staff or resources, so.
Follow up, uh, one thing that's very important to me, I'm not going to hide it, is kids' ability to go to the technical school that we offer. How does this cycling affect them? We've heard in the past that students haven't been eligible or haven't been able to go. We've had presentations because of cycling of classes. And I guess second part of that question is, when we're looking at coursework, another thing was some of the coursework doesn't count at the technical school so they can graduate. Are we looking at ways and we were going to look at ways so that work can count? Because to me, it's unacceptable that we have empty seats for our students. And we have students who want to go to that technical school, can't go because of some of those things. So how does that play into this?
So I think in this situation, all of these are electives.
Right.
So it doesn't impact the core subject areas that are required for graduation. So, um, so that answers that question for this round of courses. But I can assure you in the future, if it was a, a, a change to the core curriculum, then that would be part of the process to ensure that students that participate in CATC are able to, that was part of, you know, the whole thing is I asked them to, you know, imagine a student mapping them through their, their career. Take a couple of examples to make sure it really works and fits. So that would, will continue to be part of the process.
Have we taken a look at that? I mean, that was a couple of years ago. Haven't we looked at that as part of this process is the question. We spend time on electives, but are we helping students for that path?
So right now we have the English, uh, the English language arts department at the high school is currently updating and revising the curriculum, hoping to bring it to the board curriculum committee on April 13th. And then to the board for approval after that, as well as the math, um, social studies and science were already approved. So their cycling is coming up. So yes, as part of our regular cycling of reviewing curriculum, that will be a part of the process. Math and English language are, are coming soon.
And if I can just add in, we've been having conversations at C A T C about those open seats and how do we generate an interest in students? And one of the things that we're looking at is generating that interest at a lower level so that there's kind of like, they see, oh, that's someplace I want to get when I'm a junior or a senior and being able to do that. So we've started the conversation on how do we generate more interest in those technical classes that are available to us? So I just want you to know that, Sean, just as a piece.
No, I appreciate that, but one of the things we heard was it was because student, their path to graduation did not happen. And I really think we need to work on that.
And part of the conversation that James was mentioning, it's been around, what are the barriers to kids to get to CATC and still graduate? So that, that conversation's happening because it has to also happen at the bigger level at CATC. Right. Because there's so many intertwined schedules, but it's really, I agree with you. It is very important that we make sure that though, you know, and I, you know, I told people this before. I attended a, a conference where some other high schools in Maine were talking about how their English teachers were working with the teachers at the technical schools so that the credits were counting towards graduation. I just, it is something that we really need to think about and look at more seriously.
Charlie, you had a question? Thank you for waiting so patiently.
As a student who wanted to go to CATC and then realized it wasn't going to happen because I took German, I needed electives. I struggled to find a lot. So my junior and senior year, I had seven study halls, all of which were so, and I, I, I can't attest enough specifically to Shane Gower in Alabama, about how much needs electives are better. Shane Gower, he probably would have been such a study student, had both at high schools and college level. I regret not taking the psychology. Yeah, I, I think these courses that are being offered, we shouldn't have a long conversation.
Any other comments or questions about these courses?
How do we get that sports training and methods?
That is a good question.
So, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if that's an interest at the middle school, but I mean, are you being, I would be kidding?
I've heard there's a lot of, there's last few years.
So are we ready to vote? Okay, I think we are.
No, I'm just saying what he's saying is correct.
Dave G.
Yes.
Jade. Is she still there? I'll come back to her. Annie.
Yes.
Dane.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yeah.
Christine.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Kelty.
Yes.
David T.
Yes.
And Esme.
Yes.
And I don't know, Jade, if you're there.
Yes, I finally got my phone to let me on here. So yes.
Thank you. So pass your name.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is I just want to give you a really brief legislative update. I have sent you out some of the bills that are going to the committee. Hopefully you got a chance to look at some of that. And it's interesting, Dane, that the first one on the list was an act that states access career and technical education in middle school. So they're really looking at, well, I don't know if any of these are going to pass it on, but the latest ones that weren't on the list that I sent you last week of the school, when there are only four that we, that we did yesterday. The first one is an act regarding special education funding for so-called minimum receiver school administration units. And what I think what that means is the school units that have a high tax base, they get less. The next one is an act to require out of recess time for students in grade six to eight. And then the other two are about, one of them's about retirement, a fact to reduce benefit penalty and closed on career educators who retire after 30 years of service. And then the other one was to provide excess general fund revenue to school revolving donation funds and education stabilization fund. So that one right there, I think at least I'm interested in keeping an eye on. Is it, if, you know, as we move forward, thinking about what the future's going to be in our district, this is, you know, this is going to be important to look at that school revolving renovation, so.
And I'll just say to Kelty and David Twitchell, Wayne is a minimum receiver, has always been a minimum receiver. So that, that particular piece of legislation would be very beneficial to Wayne. So just want to point that out to you guys.
Any questions or comments on any of the other bills that I, I sent? I'll keep sending these to you and sending you what MSBA's stand on these, yes, as we go through all of them. I'm not sure yet, we just met yesterday and I wasn't at the meeting. So I'll be getting that information probably by tomorrow and then I'll send it out as soon as I get it.
I mean, they were just LD'd in the last week, so pretty hard.
A lot of the time, and, and you see a lot of them, what we decide during the MSBA is just to put them on hold until we get more information about what the fiscal, you know, responsibility is going to be, all the more information that we move. So, and these are just really preliminary, I just want people to be aware of what's being talked about, what's coming up. On to the budget workshop. So the first thing we want to do for the budget workshop tonight is to set our goal. So for our packet, we changed, we put the end, page 38, we have examples of the goals that we've been setting since 2015, 16. So any, any thoughts or ideas about our goal for this year?
What was my observation about? It appeared as though we lost students that were coming to the post. I think we put that back to that point about, really part of it, it's weird that deficiencies was what it's all. It's been on here for a year and a half. The last year and a half, all I've heard is buildings have issues and we just have to take them down or we're creating a system as well. So I just, we can look into that, I wanted to, or even three, four years, hearing.
Any other comments or, or suggestions for our goal for the budget season? So we want to just go with the one that we used last year. That was to balance these of all members of the RSC 38 school community while maintaining fiscal responsibility.
True, uh, thinking about what you said, Dane. We could perhaps adjust that slightly to say something like, to balance all the needs, the needs of all members of the, uh, school community, especially students while maintaining fiscal responsibility to retain focus on students while acknowledging that we need to keep the whole community, including the structures in, as Tyler mentioned, in our focus.
To promote student success.
Add it in all areas, student success in all areas.
I think I might, you know, could you, could you read it back to what's done? I should have gone to you first, I knew you put it in.
Got it.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
So I'll just jump in if that's okay. On page 39 and 40, um, I usually kick off the budget season by showing you the guidance that I gave to principals for the coming budget season. Going forward, I'm not going to read all of that to you, but I'm certainly can answer any questions that you may have. One of the areas of concern, and I'm going to kind of mention it now, is that we are probably looking at another year, at least one more year of the middle school probably being well over 300 students in the school. I think right now there's 303, but at one point they were 308. So it is, it is just one of those areas. Usually we run more in the 280-ish range and that does make a pretty big difference in the school. So where we are keeping the same kind of team size, so as I say, I put team size, but it kind of per teacher on the team. Some teams are three, some teams are two. So just so that you guys kind of know what I'm looking at. So just so that you guys kind of know what I'm looking at. The, the, I expect our enrollment is gonna basically stay the same, so I don't see much change in enrollment. Kindergarten's always a little bit of a, what are we gonna get? But I know at this point now, we're probably pretty solid with two kindergarten teachers, because we had to split that kindergarten this year in class. So I don't see any big change staffing wise in any area. And then again, you were just talking about class sizes or, excuse me, courses at the high school. So usually we try to ask that a high school class run with at least ten or more students in it. We try to avoid classes that, you know, drop below that, you know, eightish range. That's usually kind of hard to, for taxpayers to understand. So we try to ask them to recruit and try to keep at least ten or more students in, in the class. So the, the required sections are easy, those elective that they were just talking about, that are sometimes hard to fill. So that, that drives a little bit of what they end up offering going forward. I did put the nursing library and guidance there, as long, as well as the regular ed tech, ed, texts. At our next board meeting, I'm going to present you guys the positions that we have in the budget that are grant funded this year. And I'll show you where the money came from for these positions. And then if we want to move them into the general fund, what that would mean. So I'll list all those positions out for you guys so that you can have some time to think about it and make some decisions. And on the fifteenth, I would like to have decisions about those positions. So on the March first meeting, we can give you a first draft of the budget. So I will include on that position seat, the S R O that we're talking about, just so it's kind of got a placeholder. And we don't have to decide next meeting, but I want you guys to be able to think about it and fold that into everything else that's going on there. So, so again, when you're looking at guidance nursing, we have some grant funded positions that we need to make decisions about. So I just put what was currently staffed at that point. And then how the how the schools generate money. Each school gets two hundred dollars per student and they use it for curriculum supplies, books and classroom furniture. Title one identified schools get fifty dollars extra per student. And that's our, we've got three elementary schools, Reed Field, Mount Vernon and Wayne get that. And then we do an extra twenty-five dollars per student for those that are tier three, and that's a Wayne and Mount Vernon are tier three schools. So again, we're taking money that we're getting and diverting it into those kind of higher need schools going forward. New curriculums, you heard Karen talk a little bit about that, so we're coming forward with that as well. Same with staff professional development. That's been the same since I was here. So it's kind of looked the same year after year, the same with advisory and field trip funds. Although we will talk a little bit about advisory because we're finding now that some of the monies that were budgeted in the past probably really aren't sufficient at this point. Just with everything that's going on. So I'll point those out to you guys when we get to that point in the budget as we get there. So they are all working with the first thing that they usually do is turn it into Mandy, who will go through and make sure everything is in the right budget line, all that kind of stuff. Then Mandy and I will sit down with principals and go through any of the new requests that they might have and figure out priorities going forward. And they will start with their presentations. The principals start January first, or excuse me, February first with their presentation. So again, we'll throw out those, those positions so you guys have time to think about them. Make decisions by the fifteenth of February, so we can give you a first draft of the budget right around that March first workshop, if all goes well. So so that's, that's kind of where we are. And just wanted to give you guys a nutshell, and certainly happy to answer any questions that you guys have. Been using the same format for the last several years. So go ahead, David, of course.
Um, on the no, or the well, on the wishlist, yes, thing. I've got no problem with handling things in different way, different format. And I assume that's basically what it is. If there's a need.
Yes.
It will still be dealt with and put into priority, basically, but just not told the wishlist rather. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's what we definitely find by having conversations. We're generally able to bring the real needs to the top and the wishlist stuff to the bottom. And then obviously decide what we need to bring forward from there. So, but that's really what we're looking for. I did put the same as last year for the budget increase of two to three percent. But I'm gonna be very, I didn't hit that last year, and I think this year's gonna be even tougher to edit that. So I want to be very honest with you guys about that. Obviously, it's good to have a target and shoot for that target, but with the energy, just the energy cost and then salaries, benefits, those kinds of things, insurances, I feel like we're, we're running up against the hill at this point when it comes to those things. So which is like eighty plus percent of our budget. No, is this further down? If you look at eight C, he actually has his on March eighth, if I'm looking at that correctly. Nope, sorry, March first, March first. Sorry about that. Yes. The whole facilities. Yes. Yeah, absolutely.
I'm noticing here in staffing under elementary, it says that we'll continue to move away from multi-age classrooms. I feel like we've talked before that that was a good thing. And I was just curious why that was there, why we're moving away from.
We just, well, I say that because we've had trouble in weighing staffing at times and we ended up inadvertently with multi-age classrooms. This is the first year that we haven't had any multi-age classrooms, and I'd like to keep it that way if it's at all financially feasible to do so. But we have had, every year that I've been here, we've actually had combined classes because we couldn't find teachers to be in the roles. It was a tough staffing. So we're hoping to keep every grade separate.
So is, wasn't that like, I thought there was benefits to having multi-age classrooms. So.
Yeah, well, at the, the middle school, I would say it takes a special teacher to be able to do multi-age classrooms. I will always, my stance is I will always advocate, and I can say this honestly, because I caught multi, multi-age five, six in another lifetime. And that is really incredibly hard for teachers to do. So at the elementary level, if you're by yourself, which I think is very different from the middle school, which uses a team approach, where there's somebody else in the classroom or somebody else giving up the gift with you, it's a much easier kind of model. But if you're one teacher teaching two grade levels, it's incredibly difficult to do at the elementary level. I think this is the service to the kids. And I can always say that, like I said, in my other life, I was a five, six multi-age teacher, and it was incredibly challenging.
So could we change that wording from multi-age to combined?
I can do that. What? Yeah, yes, yes, combined. I like that. No, very good. I can do that. Whoops.
Any other questions or comments? The only thing, the only comment that I have is I just want to make sure as we're going to the budget that we're all keeping in mind what our mission and vision probably is. And that every, anything that we put in the budget, take out of the budget. And we just said that we really want to focus on students, and that's what our, our mission and our vision is. So we really, I'd like us all to keep that in mind as we move forward.
Yeah, so the only other piece that I wanted to bring forward to you guys was the budget schedule workshop, so that you would know what presentations were happening when. And like I said, I'm shooting for that March first is our first draft. So you can see kind of the whole picture as a first draft on March first, and we'll do all our backlog on work. And we will have all our presentations beginning February first with the principals. So then we can get into the annual, notice March fifteen is the annual report from the auditor. And that is, it's been pretty successful bringing in the local school board, or excuse me, local select boards into the school board meeting so that they can ask questions and weigh in on some of the things. And that's been very successful the last couple of years. So we continue to have that. And then there is a tentative March twenty-second date if we need it. And then if all goes well, we will do our annual meeting on May ten, and then the budget validation will be June twelve. So it will be busy soon coming up.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Jade, for that. So do I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move, we go into executive session to consider negotiations between the Central Office of Support Staff and the R S U thirty-eight Board of Practices.
So it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session to consider negotiations between the Central Office of Support Staff and R S U Board of Directors. Any discussion?
David G.
Yes.
Jade.
Yes.
Annie.
Yes.
Dane.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yeah.
Christine.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yeah.
Uh, excuse me, Rebecca.
Yes.
Betty.
Yes.
Sean.
Yes.
Kelty.
Yes.
And David T.
Yeah.
And Esme, we'd like to vote. Thank you. It's unanimous.
Is there a motion to accept the negotiated agreement between the Central Office of Support Staff and the Board of Directors? Moved and seconded to accept the negotiation between the Support Staff and the Board. Any discussion?
Okay. David G. Jade's not here. Annie, is she still here?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Oh, is Jade here? No, okay, sorry. Dane. Tyler.
Yeah.
Christine.
Yeah.
Kathy.
Yes.
Rebecca.
Yes.
Betty. Sean. Kelty. David T.
Yes.
It is unanimous.
Okay, good. Again. I failed to ask somebody to pay attention to our norms again. Does anybody have anything to say?
What I want to add to our norm is that you won't ask. I think it's like when I go home tonight, and by next meeting, I put out all about it.
Gosh. And do a good job. Yeah.
I think it was a good. Every now and then.